Okay, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
And I oppose. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May 9, 2022. Can we please stand by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Julia Montanez, and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the grandmother of Ilola Lala, the grandmother of Michelle Silastri, the grandmother of Maria Velika, the grandmother of Betsa Yates, and the father-in-law of Junine Mussolini.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're going to start with our good news. We're so happy is back. Go ahead, Dr. Hatter.
Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. Tonight's a very exciting night because we continue with the good news presentations, but we have a very special group here this evening to present to the Board of Education and to our school community, the MESMS Visionaries. They are our first LEGO League team. First is just a terrific organization and our students get to go around and compete against other teams in various challenges using a robot that they've designed using. Their great innovation, great creativity. There's a lot of brilliance that goes into the collaboration that I have at least seen firsthand and I appreciated the opportunity to come visit with the MESMS Visionaries multiple times. So I think you'll be impressed. They also achieved a first in our first LEGO League team history. So we'll talk more about the accomplishments of this team, but we are just so fortunate and so delighted to have the MESMS Visionaries here with us tonight, led by Advisor Mr. Latka and Mr. Ypsilantis, and of course, under the leadership of MESMS Principal Mrs. Horowitz. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Horowitz to introduce the MESMS Visionary Team.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Carbone, and Board Trustees, Mrs. O'Shea and Mr. Cole. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing to you the MESMS First LEGO League under the leadership of Mr. Latka. I just wanted to also mention, our Science Olympiad team went to states for the first time. They were fifth place in the region. And they medaled in three events in states, coming in first in one of the events. I am so proud of my students and all that they've accomplished and without further ado, I want you to see what the First LEGO League does.
My name is Matt Latka. I'm a technology teacher in the middle school. I'm also one of the coaches for this year's First LEGO League team. Panalise Ypsilantis, one of my colleagues, can't be here tonight, but he sends his regards as well. I want to personally thank the Board of Education for bringing us here tonight because this is good news. And it was a very exciting year with them. We achieved a lot of firsts, as Dr. Hatter said, and you know, I'm glad that we're here to present it to you. First thing I want to go into is what is First LEGO League? Well, it's not just Legos, okay? And I really truly mean that, okay? First LEGO League is a big worldwide organization and each year they come up with a theme. This year's theme was Cargo Connect. Very, very broad topic. After they give us this theme, the students need to come up with an innovative project based on this year's theme that really has nothing to do with Legos. And you're going to see their presentation on this innovative project shortly. After or during while they're coming up with this innovative project, they also need to create a robot using Legos. This is where the Legos come in. And they use the LEGO Mindstorm Education Collection where they learn about coding, develop their own code, and really hit a master level of coding in this particular device. And you're going to see their robot run on the course through a video. And we're excited to show you that. Our team has worked really, really hard this year, as you probably heard. We started way back in October. We spend about five to 10 hours a week since October getting ready for our competitions. And our hard work really benefited us. Why? Well, we were crowned champion at the Hudson Valley Cargo Connect Qualifier here this year. That was the first time we ever would done that. By being crowned that championship, it advances to the Hudson Valley Cargo Connect Championships. Usually these events are done in person, but because of COVID and all the restrictions, we had another obstacle to overcome and that was we had to do everything online. And they really stepped up and really performed great at that task. Because they worked so hard in those first two events, we actually received an invitation to attend an in-person event this weekend, actually, at the Liberty Science Center. So they're actually going to go down to Liberty Science Center this weekend and compete against 30 other teams. But this is actually all over the United States. There's teams from California, West Virginia, Florida, all over the United States. And we're very, very excited to be competing in that and that's this weekend. So they did an outstanding job on that. Now, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to this year's team where they will begin their innovative project idea. You guys could come on up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashmael Bupula and I'm in sixth grade. Three words my teammates describe me as was helpful, energetic, and funny. I joined FLL in order to learn new things and be creative.
Hi, my name is Maria Campbell and I'm in seventh grade. My teammates describe me as hardworking, loyal, and energetic. I join FLL because I have the experience and the energy.
Hi, my name is Sar and I'm in seventh grade. Three words my teammates use to describe me as are smart, energetic, and funny. I joined FLL because I love programming and building.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I'm in seventh grade. Three words my teammates describe me as are creative, loyal, and smart. I join FLL because I'm passionate about the community and the community's little bodies.
Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm in eighth grade. My teammates describe me as smart, creative, and perfect. I join FLL because I'm a born worker.
Hi, my name is Maria Zidane and I'm in sixth grade. My teammates describe me as creative, smart, and funny. I join FLL because I like working with others.
Hi, my name is Angie and I'm in sixth grade. My teammates describe me as creative, smart, and funny. I join FLL because I like working with others.
Hi, my name is Diane and I'm in seventh grade. I live in Fort Worth, New York. My teammates describe me as nice, funny, and smart. I join FLL because I want to help find new solutions to solve my problems.
Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm in sixth grade. This is my first year doing First LEGO League. And I joined First LEGO League this year because I always enjoy working with robots and idols. And my teammates describe me as helpful, loyal, and funny.
Hi, my name is Julia and I'm in seventh grade. My teammates describe me as friendly, hardworking, and energetic. I join FLL because I like working with others and working together. By the way, these are my students and young and definitely good with the FLL.
So would it make sense to...
Yeah.
Will it reach over there? It's kind of taped down. Is this close enough?
Yeah, and then they should use the mic and speak.
Okay, come on over here and just kind of three over here or split the group this way and then over here. Okay, I'll hold it for you guys. We'll have it like we did it to virtual competition. No, that's all right, too. Okay, guys.
What is this? I didn't order anything.
Is this 1-2-3-4 MESMS Drive? I have delivery.
Yes, it is.
Here's your package, ma'am.
Wow, this looks like my grandfather's package. I wonder what's inside.
Wow, this criminal looks really old. What took it so long to get here? Well, you see, ports are really congested and they have been for a while.
Really? Why are they jammed? Can't they just use other ways of transport?
No, because ports have... Boats have improved into the most cost and time efficient way to transport goods overseas. So most cargo is being focused on the boats and thus the ports are being congested.
But why is this such a big problem?
Well, it's problematic because the U.S. only has a few major ports for all these ships to go to and when vehicles are idle or ramp up fuel costs, it more CO2 fills the air.
That's terrible. Well, a few of my neighbors have helped design a way to help disperse congestion. Let me call them right now.
Hi, so we found a way to disperse congestion using underground tunnels. Our solution is called HyperNet.
Our solution helps to disperse congestion evenly. This allows packages to arrive at their destination quicker and avoid a lot of traffic.
HyperNet uses two forms of transportation, ground and underground. This helps your easy and efficient transit.
This sounds so interesting. Please tell us more about how HyperNet works.
Let me consult my workers to tell you all the details.
Hi, HyperNet is a system of interconnected tunnels that link the stations and is for cargo purposes only. And these tunnels would be pods that can carry the cargo back and forth. These pods can carry up to 420-foot equivalents as well as up to 200,000 pounds. This system uses magnetic levitation to move. Along the tunnel, there will be north and south pole magnets. These will interact with the changing magnets mounted on the pod, which propel the pod forward. The cargo will be able to move from station to station using these pods and tunnels.
Wait, but how does the package get to my house?
Well, first trucks go to their assigned stations to pick up their assigned packages. Then they will disperse and deliver these packages, then come back to the stations to repeat this process.
Okay, but how do the packages get from the station to the trucks and vice versa?
That's a good point. In order to answer your question, you're going to have to know about how HyperNet stations work.
Hey there. Well, I heard that stations link the above and below ground transportation systems. I think this allows the cargo to move between these two levels easily, whether it's going down or back up. Am I wrong? You know that I'm right.
Yes, you're right. Inside the stations, there are three major levels. The lowermost one connects to the underground tunnels. Then a sorting station will be in the middle and the top level will connect to ground transport with trucks.
First, the package gets sorted by a machine to figure out where it needs to go. If the package is at its closest station to its destination, they are sent up to ground load for departure. If it is not, they are sent to another pod to get to another station. Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold your horses there. Isn't this going to be like way too much money? You know that money doesn't grow on trees.
Well, initially, this plan would cost around $4.1 billion with $512 million every year for maintenance. This sounds like a lot, but in the long run, HyperNet actually saves a lot of money.
Fine, then how much would it save then?
It would save around $6.1 billion and if you factor in the maintenance costs, this is a savings of $5.6 billion every year.
Okay, but how would your ideas save both time and money?
Well, let's take an example of a package calling from New York City to Buffalo. If we use current forms of transportation, this journey would take over three days and cost over a dollar per pound. However, with our solution, HyperNet, this journey takes a little over three hours and costs just three cents per pound.
Uh, but how long would it take to make this thing? I'm not waiting that long.
It will take approximately three years for it to be constructed in New York.
Three years? I guess that's not too bad.
Yeah, well, what are some other benefits of your idea?
Our idea has many different benefits, but one of the biggest ones is that it can run no matter weather because it's mainly underground.
Hold on, wouldn't this be a waste if you're only using this system in New York? I mean, come on. Well, our solution is only starting in New York, but our plan is that other states within this country will hopefully want to adapt to our system after seeing how well it's working.
Our idea solves our initial problem with congestion. By having the stations at the ports themselves, it would reduce the amount of time it would take to load the cargo onto the truck. This would be more quick and efficient.
Plus, we talked about our idea with many helpful experts and did a bunch of research online to make sure that HyperNet runs smoothly.
Okay, this gives me much better understanding of our idea and I'll give it to you. You proved me wrong.
Visionaries!
Okay, that was our innovative project part of it, where the students have brainstormed, developed, and come up with all of those ideas. Now, as far as the LEGO aspect, we have a little video on one of our runs here that you'll be able to watch. It'll be on the smart board up here, okay? So this is how we presented to everybody. You guys can sit down. Three, two, one, LEGO! It's moving across to the table, eye tracing around and checking. It's going over to the home delivery. Oh, I'm sorry, it's going over to drop the one side of the bridge and then it's going to home delivery to drop the bridge, which it has. Now it's going to come back, navigate over to the train tracks to drop the train track down. Okay, it has. Now it's going to come on over, circle back. It's trying to put our innovative project model into the cargo area and drop the bridge. Now we come over here, it's going on mission two, where it's going to be moving over to blue box off the course where now it can be loaded and it's navigating over to the engine switch. Now it's going to go to unload our cargo plane, which it has, and it's going to move the package into the circle. And it's coming back now at a base. Now we are going to take our gray blocks, the cargo, push them into our area and it's going to navigate back. Now we are on our third mission. Okay, where we're going across the table, again, through color sensors and it's going over to unload the cargo. Okay? And it's moving over. And it pushes and now it's going to back up, raise the arm, come over and it's going to do the airdrop. It's moving to the airdrop and it drops the airdrop. It's getting now positioned to move the train tracks. Okay, which it has. And we are at two minutes right now. So now it's going to back up. I'm going to give you a countdown. Two minutes, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. Time's up. Now, I'm going to give you a court tour around our track or our course. I think this was an...
Outstanding.
Outstanding run here. Okay. So the first one I want to do is empty out the blue. As you see, our students, it really worked incredibly hard to code that robot from their computers to transfer their missions or their strategy for the missions. There's a lot more to this than meets the eye because they had to come up with a strategy. What made sense to do first and they had to prioritize, what was each one of those things that they accomplished, they would give them an exact amount of points. And for this particular mission, how much was it? It was 400 and what?
410.
410 points they were able to amass with this, which is an incredible accomplishment in this. And you know, like I said, they worked incredibly hard and they really deserve a lot of credit for what they've accomplished this year. But thank you very much and thanks.
That was absolutely extraordinary. We were watching the video on a smaller screen so we didn't get to see it on the interactive display, but we saw it here on the Chromebook. That was absolutely amazing. And when I visited with you and you presented the skit to me and when you showed me all of the obstacles that your robot was programmed to move through, I just remember standing there with such pride. It's the same pride that I have tonight looking at the programs and opportunities that are available to you in the middle school. You have represented not just Mildred East Strang Middle School, but the Yorktown Central School District with such pride. Not only at the FLL qualifiers, the state competitions. This weekend, you'll be representing Yorktown again. So I know that regardless of the outcome, you're going to make us proud, you already have. This is, as I was sitting here, I'm very fond of the STEAM fields. I think you all are aware of that. I can't do this. I look at what you all did and I just say, wow, that is so impressive. And you all had a great role, whether it was marketing, coming up with the design for the shirts, programming the robot, designing the robot, creating the skit. The innovation, my gosh, how amazing of everything that you came up with. And I just want to thank, obviously, members of our Board of Education. I remember being relatively new here and Rashmi Bose and I had a conversation about First LEGO League and First Robotic Competition and the support of this board has just been absolutely extraordinary. So I thank you all for the support that you've lent to create opportunities like this for our students. Jackie, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I am not as technologically involved as Rashmi is. So when you first started talking about this years ago, I didn't have a clue. This is amazing. It really is amazing what these kids are able to do, what these students are able to do, what they can envision. I am just floored by their design, by their thought process. They're incredible and I'm just so excited that we have this program here that really embraces everything that's 21st century and beyond. So thank you and thank you all for bringing it here. And you kids are amazing. You guys, anybody else? Go ahead, Rashmi.
So I am so incredibly proud of this team and Mr. Latka, Mrs. Horowitz, Mr. Ypsilantis. I remember when we brought FLL to the middle school and this was right after we had launched the High School Robotics Club. It was, you know, we didn't know what the path would look like, but it was definitely something that we wanted to offer to our students. And just like Dr. Hatter, I feel very passionately about the STEAM fields too. And this team is only four years old. So to be not just competing, but to be winning at a regional competition is incredible. And I'm also proud to say that we have hosted FLL qualifiers here at YCSD. And to have that honor is really unique because there's only 10 qualifiers in the entire Hudson Valley region, the lower Hudson Valley. So we're one of those 10 sites. We have hosted them, was it two years, Dr. Hatter?
Two.
Three, yeah.
There's a possibility that we'll host one in our future.
Yeah, so I think post-COVID, we are going to have that opportunity again. So congratulations to all of you and to Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea and Mr. Cole for making it happen.
And before we conclude, I just want to echo one of the things I heard. We are a public school team. Anyone who's interested is allowed to participate. There are teams where students selected and they go across districts. You came to, and you won and you advanced beyond the qualifiers. I'm so proud of you all. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Latka and Mr. Y. Because when we came to you with this big idea and Mrs. Horowitz embraced the idea first and you stepped up to do this and you didn't have a particular expertise or experience, but you love children and you'll always step up for your students. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for stepping up to this challenge because this is no easy ask. So Mr. Latka, Mr. Y, who I know is not here, but I'm sure you'll extend the sentiment, thank you for stepping up to lead our team. So we have a whole nother portion of the meeting to conduct. We're going to talk about the budget. We're going to talk about buses. It's a really fun meeting that we have ahead of us. But what we'll do is we'll take a quick five-minute recess because I know you have homework. I have a middle schooler too at Strang. So we'll take a five-minute recess and anyone who wants to depart for the evening, you're welcome to go home for the night. I want to come down and say thank you and congratulations to you, but we'll take a brief recess so that anybody who wishes to exit may do so at that time.
Can I get the team together for a picture? Can I get you all together? Oh, that's mine.
I don't know what it is. Yeah, gorgeous, gorgeous.
Oh, the yellow?
Yeah. Oh, is it? I want it.
So he's like the, I call him like the techie magician because he's a very techie person.
That's my favorite color. I wanted yellow. Like cream, wearing his baby. You're welcome. Oh, you weren't home?
No, I was in Florida.
You have a place in Florida? Allergies are very bad. I feel it works wonders. My husband does, if you have allergies. My son too. My son has had best allergies.
No, he's got so much going on.
Black.
Oh, black?
I mean, if you read about it, maybe something. Do you have allergies? I keep getting alerts for allergies.
to be tax reductions in both the town of Cortland and the town of Newcastle of 1.18% and 4.72% respectively. The budget and its components is broken up thusly. The administrative component is estimated to be $10,994,754. The programmatic component of the budget is $86,248,716. And the capital component is estimated to be $11,561,529.
We are going to have public comment on the budget, and then we will read the propositions as they will appear on the budget. So before we start the public comment on the hearing, I just want to reiterate certain public comment rules. We do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students, and anybody who speaks in violation will be asked, will give up their right to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anybody using abusive or inflammatory language, or using offensive language, or causing a disruption, will give up their right to speak. And members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for others, and we do not allow calling out, clapping, or disruptions from the audience. And I did not mean, only have one person signed up, and it was not directed at you, I just have to read that. So Patricia Sullivan-Rothberg.
Good evening, Board of Ed, and Dr. Hatter. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. That was magnificent, and that really ties into what I want to say about the budget. My name is Patricia Sullivan-Rothberg. I am a 16-year resident with a student who graduated last year. I want to address the school budget, which I am 100% in favor of passing, and I want to address a lot of misinformation that's been going around our district and the Lakeland district. And I say this because when I was a fifth grader in Rockland County, I was in a district where our budget got denied, and there were consequences. And consequences like if you lived under a mile and a half, you had to walk, and I was just under that mile and a half. And this was before parents drove kids everywhere, so we walked. But I also lost my favorite music teacher. We lost programs. Our district spiraled into a very difficult period. And I want the board to know that you have worked very hard over the years. Mr. Cole has worked. When we had a financial crisis back in 2008, the teachers did not take a raise that they could have. This board has been very cooperative in being conservative financially. I appreciate that, and I want to give voice to that. But I also want to speak to why I want to pass this budget. What we just saw tonight, Fiddler on the Roof, our lacrosse team. When I came to see Fiddler, and I was sobbing, because when I see the administration, the teachers, whether it's the stage people, the people behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, working together, and people having an opportunity like that, that's life-changing for certain students. And that's why I know my taxes are going to go up, but I want my teachers paid well. I want my police paid well. I want them to have health insurance. I want them to want to come to work. And so when I hear a lot of misinformation, and I hear it on the chat or on Facebook, I want you to all know, we support what you're doing. Tom Cole has held this ship very, very steady, and all of you have. There is not outrageous spending. And I've probably gone over my time, but these programs that we saw tonight, they don't happen in a vacuum. Our lacrosse team, our amazing performing arts, these things happen when we work together and when we have funding. And I will be voting yes, and thank you all. It's been a couple of years, and I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. I'm going to read the propositions as they appear on the budget, and then the candidates for school board. Proposition 1 is, shall the annual school budget for the fiscal year 2223 in the amount of $108,800,000, and the requisite portion thereof be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district be approved? Proposition 2 is a capital reserve fund, so the Yorktown Central School District be authorized to increase the maximum amount of the Buildings and Facilities Improvement Reserve Fund, which was established in 2017, by an additional $12 million plus interest in earnings, and to extend the duration of the Capital Reserve Fund for an additional 10 years until June 30, 2037. The members of the Board of Education, you to vote for three. There are three vacancies. The first is, it's Richard Gionesco, Reshmi Bose, Lisa Roll, Michael Kapalbo, Cheryl Reynolds, and Frank Panabianco. Ron, did you want to speak about the Capital Reserve Fund?
Sure. The Capital Reserve is a vehicle that the district uses to finance smaller-scale facility improvement projects. There is no impact to the tax rate for approving the Capital Reserve Fund. An example of some of the work that has been done using the Capital Reserve includes our beautiful high school gymnasium, which was completely upgraded, actually hosted the Section 1 basketball championships there, and the nurses' suite at Mohansik, the Brookside cafeteria and servery, the corridor ceiling walls and lights at Crampon School. At the middle school, we upgraded the air conditioning system by replacing the cooling tower, and just so many other projects along the way. In addition, for the summer of 2022, there are some additional projects that are planned using the original Capital Reserve, and that includes air conditioning of large space, instructional spaces, cafeteria and gymnasium also. It includes, and I forgot to mention that, the original Capital Reserve outfitted the entire second floor of the high school with air conditioning. And anybody who has had a class on the second floor in the high school can attest to the temperatures that the second floor exceeds. So we have outfitted the second floor with air conditioning as well. For the summer of 2022, it's air conditioning of the cafeterias and gymnasiums of all of our district spaces. It's also looking at the gymnasium of the middle school, which is a very valuable instructional space and athletic space, and finally, looking at the Crampon cafeteria. And again, those are monies that do not impact the tax rate. Rather, they are funded with voter authorization. Voter authorization is needed to withdraw any monies. We have to bring all projects to the voters for their authorization. And what the board is seeking to do on the ballot next week is to re-up the original Capital Reserve Fund. The original Capital Reserve Fund was funded at a level of $12 million over a 10-year period. We have met the $12 million, and what we're looking to do is continue with the Capital Reserve Fund, so that we can continue to invest in our facilities. And we want our facilities to be commensurate with the high-quality education happening within our walls. And that is why this board, and I commend this board, for making those decisions. And in terms of the Capital Reserve project, we're looking at, and the hearing committee of the board is looking at various projects to consider moving forward. One other piece of note, and I've noted all of this in my newsletter, so for our community watching at home, this is in my most recent newsletter to the community. It'll be in the budget newsletter that'll hit mailboxes next week. But just one other benefit is it reduces the borrowing costs. So whenever you borrow money, there are interest costs, there are bonding fees, there's the cost for a bond vote. So a Capital Reserve Fund alleviates the fees associated with borrowing money. So it's a prudent approach to maintaining facilities. So I thank the board for your foresight.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Pete, any questions on the budget, comments on the budget? Reshmi? Cheryl?
No.
Lisa?
No questions. Just thank you again, Tom, for all the hard work.
Mike? All right. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. So now we are up to our public comment on agenda-related items. Even though no one signed up, so we're going to go right on to our superintendent's update.
Okay. So I have several items to update you on, including conversations regarding electric vehicles, electric buses. This evening, joining us with Patty Sauer, who is our Transportation Director, the best in the field, the absolute best in the field. I say that publicly, I say it on record. Patty will be here forever on TV. Patty is the best transportation person you'll ever meet. And we also are joined by the leadership of Total Transportation, Todd Farber and Vincent Moisella, and we're just so appreciative. I just want to start, before I introduce Todd and Vincent this evening, by just thanking Total Transportation. If you recall, a few years ago, we started with Total. Baumann had gone out of business, and we were looking for another bus contractor to take over our account. Total stepped up in a big way, and we obviously had some bumps in the road at the beginning of the relationship, but I will tell you that they have been since that meeting, and it was on October 19 of 2019, I believe, if I recall correctly. It was October 19 of 2019. That day will forever be etched in my mind, because that's where we saw the turnaround. Just two months in, and Total has been nothing short of spectacular. They have serviced our account at the highest level. They have been responsive to our needs. They have saved, and most importantly, they have safely transported our children day in and day out. So I just wanted to publicly thank Total Transportation, thank Todd and Vincent for their work, and Renee, of course, back in the office, for all of their work. They have been absolutely phenomenal, responsive. We have just a great collaborative relationship. One of the conversations that we've been having, and this is not anything new for our board, is looking at ways to be efficient, to be environmentally friendly. So this is not a conversation that is a new one for us. We've looked at LED lighting upgrades, we've looked at other enhancements on our campuses. But part of that is looking at transportation, and having a conversation on electric buses, and whether that's a viable option for us. What's the timeframe? There's been a lot of talk in the news on electric buses, and there's certainly been some conversations out of Albany regarding funding for electric buses. With regard to Total Transportation, how that impacts us, I just wanted us to be able to have a conversation, make sure that it was available publicly. Todd and Vinnie are here. If there are any questions that we have, they're able to answer those for us. So there are pros and there are cons to having electric vehicles. So as we think about our opportunities and challenges moving forward, I wanted either Todd or Vinnie to come up to the microphone to share some of those. I would love to have them sit up here with us. I just don't know if we have the...
I think we'd have chairs.
I think I have some chairs, too. So actually, Todd and Vinnie, I'm going to invite you up to sit right next to me here on the stage.[1341.53][1341.53](MUTTERING)
It's nice to put him in the witness chair.[1343.53][1343.53](LAUGHING)
You can kind of those lights right there?
This is a much, much cooler seat than the last time.
Yes, yes. Okay. So Todd and Vinnie, you can just turn that on. So Todd and Vinnie have engaged us in a conversation. I've learned a lot in speaking to both Todd and Vinnie about electric buses. So Todd, can you give us just the highs, the lows, pros, cons, anything that you can share?
Absolutely. So we are eyes wide open on electric buses. Think it's definitely where we're headed. Love to be a pioneer in that, and that's really what we're doing. Right now, we're piloting two small electric buses in New York City, and we're having challenges. And we started, we agreed to the pilot, because New York City's flat. We figured the distance that we're going to be running is a smaller distance, but we didn't factor in time. So even though we're going a smaller distance from stop to stop in New York City, it's taking you three times as long as it would take you in a rural area. So we really weren't getting the best data out of that project, and we weren't having the most success with the vehicle. So we just recently committed, we have six big buses that we're converting from diesel to electric. Then on top of that, we ordered 10 brand-new, from three different manufacturers, big buses, all-electric. And our plan is to spread them out throughout our customers. So we're going to definitely have one by, in next school year, there'll be one operating up here, and we're going to pick all different markets to run them in, and get our data, which of the carriers are, sorry, manufacturers are, give the best product? What areas are they running the best? Where can we give the manufacturers improvement on them? And then do a whole school year, and at the end of that school year, put our stuff together, and come up with a plan for how we're going to add more for the next year. I love the idea. I want it to work. In order for it to be successful, you have to start small. If we overcommit, we're just going to hurt service to the children. So we're going to commit, and we're going to do it slowly, systematically, use the research that we get from ourselves, not what the manufacturer is telling us, because when the manufacturer gave us the two in New York City, I thought we were going on a road trip. I thought we were all going to get on this bus, and we're going to be doing field trips, and we're going to be doing PR, and we have a hard time making it to City Hall for the photo shoot. Not to knock anything, it's a new technology. It works great in the cars. I myself drive an electric car. It's the weight, and it's the demand on the batteries. It's the air conditioning, or it's the heat, or it's the stop and go. They'll get it right, and there'll be some great electric buses. We just have to get there slowly, methodically, and smart, and we're going to do it. And we've committed to our company. Our company is taking on partners nationally to do this, and we are going to be ahead of any other bus company by the date we have to have all electric buses, but we're going to do it the right way. We're going to learn from our mistakes, and there's going to be a bunch, and we're going to have issues, and it's going to be back and forth to the manufacturer, and it's going to be, you know, the same road it was to get electric cars to be an everyday thing that you see in everyone's driveway now. But we will get there, and we'll get there correctly.
Oh, there, please, please.
There's lots of questions. Do I want to start down here? Who would like to ask questions? Anybody could?
Sure. So first, I want to say it's great to have you both here. You know, when we all met both of you for the first time, it was under very different circumstances. It was a small box and Zoom, and Baumann had just gone bankrupt, and, you know, we needed a new vendor. I, you know, I commend the work you guys have done. The fleet is a newer fleet. It's a quieter fleet, and I think some of the reliability issues that had crept up, you know, over the years, have been addressed very well. So kudos. Just a few thoughts or questions, I guess, and I, you know, I realize you may not have, you know, answers to them tonight, but I kind of want to put it out there. So you said that the pilot would be across different areas, right? So would you have multiple charging locations, or would you have a central charging facility? How would that work?
So we'd be installing charging locations at all of our bases, enough to at least charge two vehicles at our first wave, because we don't see more than two vehicles for this upcoming school year. And then we've met with a wide variety of charging solutions. The problem with charging solutions is, is the more chargers you have, the more space you're taking from the yard, and the less buses you could park. So we met with a partner that has an idea to remove the blocktop, put a magnet charger underneath the blocktop, reseal it, and the vehicles can park where they are. So we're going to be also not only testing different types of buses, but different types of charging solutions. Ideally, for a bus company, the magnet charging would be ideal, because you're not losing yard space, but the cost is, that's the highest level of cost. We are working on grants and...
electric buses, but we're going to do it the right way. We're going to learn from our mistakes and there's going to be a bunch, and we're going to have issues, and it's going to be back and forth to the manufacturer, and it's going to be, you know, the same road it was to get electric cars to be an everyday thing that you see in everyone's driveway now. But we will get there, and we'll get there correctly.
Oh, there, please, please.
There's lots of questions. Do I want to start down here? Who would like to ask questions? Anybody could?
Sure. So first, I want to say it's great to have you both here. You know, when we all met both of you for the first time, it was under very different circumstances. It was a small box in Zoom and Baumann had just gone bankrupt and, you know, we needed a new vendor. I, you know, I commend the work you guys have done. The fleet is a newer fleet, it's a quieter fleet, and I think some of the reliability issues that had crept up, you know, over the years have been addressed very well. So kudos. Just a few thoughts or questions, I guess, and I, you know, I realize you may not have, you know, answers to them tonight, but I kind of want to put it out there. So you said that the pilot would be across different areas, right? So with the, would you have multiple charging locations or would you have a central charging facility? How would that work?
So we'd be installing charging locations at all of our bases, enough to at least charge two vehicles at our first wave, because we don't see more than two vehicles for this upcoming school year. And then we've met with a wide variety of charging solutions. The problem with charging solutions is, is the more chargers you have, the more space you're taking from the yard--
Right.
--and the less buses you could park. So we met with a partner that has an idea to remove the blacktop, put a magnet charger underneath the blacktop, reseal it, and the vehicles can park where they are. So we're going to be also not only testing different types of buses, but different types of charging solutions. Ideally, for a bus company, the magnet charging would be ideal because you're not losing yard space, but the cost is, that's the highest level of cost. We are working on grants and, and stuff and being where we're going, getting out in front of this, where we're getting some grant money to do stuff like that. And at the same time, looking for other ways to reduce our car, our carbon footprint as a bus company. So the first stage in this, when we were looking at reducing our carbon footprint, was getting away from diesel and going to gasoline big buses. There's five here in this district. Every new bus that's not electric is going to be a gas bus. We're looking at other locations where we're going to use solar to reduce our carbon footprint in our maintenance shops. We now have one maintenance shop that services 400 vehicles in Brooklyn that is all solar. Before that, we did a test with a company that provides net metering of wind power. So we've always been ahead of the curve on reducing our carbon footprint. We understand that we're, when you run a lot of buses, you, you create a lot of pollution, and we're looking for ways around it. And then the electric bus stopped being a conversation and the government got behind it and started putting money into it. Because we've been talking about electric buses for a few years, but now you're seeing movement because we got some infrastructure money and to actually do it. To send six, we're going to send 10, but right now, there's six buses on Long Island being, having the diesel engine removed and batteries put in, it's a pretty cool process to watch.
Right. So, so speaking on the, on the, the economics of it, so for districts that lease buses or own the buses, there will possibly be incentives that are offered at the state level. So for a district like us, where we have a provider for transportation, would any, any of the subsidies or any grants that you guys get, would you pass it on to the, you know, to, to your clients, or how, how would that work?
So the subsidies that we get go directly to the bus manufacturer. So we fill out a whole bunch of paperwork, we explain the need and thing, and if approved, that money doesn't go to us, it goes directly to the person we're buying the vehicle from. And right now, we're seeing about a 30%, that we're getting 30% of the cost of the project in grant money.
Okay.
So if you look at an electric bus off the line right now, a regular bus, let's say, is $100,000 for a regular large school bus, an electric bus is like $240,000. So if we can get enough grants to get that cost as close to what it costs us for a regular bus now, we're still within our bid model and our budget that we put together for you guys.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know how typical this, and in this area of Westchester, it's very typical. All of our power lines are above ground, you can sneeze and the power goes out. So if we have all-electric buses and we have a power outage, what happens to our buses?
Another challenge. So on the, the short-term answers, while you have a few, we have generator backup power, right, that can, that can charge the vehicle. But the whole infrastructure of our area, the country, has to improve to allow for electrification. It's another roadblock in, in doing this. The power, you wouldn't believe this if I told you, but your power up here is a lot more reliable than our power in Brooklyn. And that's, that's, and that's where they're heading to, they want all-electric school buses by, by a certain date. I mean, we don't have the infrastructure in place right now to do it, so it's another roadblock. But if you keep challenging the roadblocks and keep challenging the politicians, then we'll get, we'll get there. Do I think that it's an aggressive timeline that's out there now by 2035? Yes. Not impossible, and we could be surprised, technology gets better every year. The problem also with being in the forefront of this is you're going to have the oldest technology first, right? So if you dive in too quickly, you're going to be obsolete way before, right? We can get 10 years out of a big bus, a gas big bus or diesel big bus, but how many years can we get out of an electric before the technology changes? So that's why we're, you know, it would look better if we'd say, no, we're all in, we're going to be the first, but it has to be done right because there's so many roadblocks in the way. And the only one who gets affected by the roadblocks are the students.
Yeah, I just, I have two things. One, for all those roadblocks, I would suggest you talk to some Yorktown students because they could probably solve them for you.
It's a tough act to follow.
And two, I just want to thank you for the slow and methodical approach. I mean, you know, we could say, yeah, we're all in 100%, and then our kids aren't getting to school or some other--
Right.
--catastrophe happens and it costs the taxpayers a lot of money. So I appreciate the, the way in which you're going about this.
I would say, let's push the electrification on the delivery services, on the Amazon delivery service and stuff, because if a package doesn't come, it's not devastating. If a child doesn't get to school. So they're, hopefully, they're going to be the first ones to, but their vehicles aren't large enough, but it will be close enough to get us some real good data, and we're going to use data from the delivery service as well. But it seems in the country, the big push is school buses. Everyone wants to see an electric school bus. They don't care about the electric delivery vehicle. So it's putting a little bit of pressure on us, but we're going to be getting our research from everywhere.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have, oh, sorry. I have a question as far as roadblocks. We had talked about one roadblock being not necessarily distance, but the length of time it gets you somewhere. So your traffic patterns will be important in planning. Talked about another roadblock being power outages. What else do you foresee as roadblocks in the future?
Maintenance. I see maintenance, I see charging, cold weather has a real impact on, on the batteries right now. If you, if you use a battery too close to its end capacity, it's a whole process, the battery has to be warmed up. There's a lot of, there's just, every time we turn another corner, there's another roadblock. We had a driver that, that did a midday, forgot to come back to the base and charge. She said, oh, no, I got, it says I have 70 miles, I'm only going to do. Well, he went down to 5%. Then on the side of the road, in the winter, we brought this truck in that had heaters and we had to heat up the batteries to the point where they would accept a charge. So every new adventure is coming to another, another roadblock, but we're learning from them.
Right.
And that's, and that's what it is. If we're going to get there, it's going to--
We appreciate it.
--it's going to be that way. And unfortunately, all of our hard work is going to be eaten up by the rest of the industry. And so that's, but that's the way. If you want to be in front of something, you got to be willing to, to give some away.
You had mentioned that your pilot programs, it's different-sized buses, and are you also working with multiple manufacturers?
Yeah.
Or is it single manufacturers? And have you seen differences in manufacturers to date, or is that still to come?
So the, we, right now, we have an order with three manufacturers that haven't come in yet. The ones we're actually operating are from two different manufacturers. Similar problems, mostly related to the battery and power management, same battery technology, right? So what we're really looking for is another type of battery technology to be put in by one of the other vendors so we can test those two. But similar problems, range, power management issues, meaning you put a heavy load on it with the AC or with, or the heat, and just length of travel. And you, they have regular batteries in, in the vehicles as well for accessories, but then those batteries get killed because they're not being recharged by the battery system. So there's some tweaks that have to be made to, so all the systems run together.
Okay.
You know, but it's, yeah, we're definitely not sticking with one manufacturer. And the retrofit ones is one manufacturer doing it, but we're using two different types of technology. So same guy retrofitting the diesel bus to electric bus, but using two different kinds of electric technology.
Just, and what you had mentioned about power. So is there, do weight restrictions come into play, like the number of kids on a bus, or?
We haven't, no, we haven't seen that. It's the motors, electric motors that are being put in a big bus will far outweigh the load that we could put on them. And it's, with electric vehicles, it's like the revolutions per minute just are, as much juice as you have, it will give, especially in these, electric cars are incredible, how, how quick they are and how dependable they are. But it really goes by the technology and, and the batteries that are used and the bat, and the, the load put on the battery, not really the weight, the weight, the weight's fine.
Part of it was a hill, going up a hill while you have the heat or the air conditioning going. Can you speak to that with regard to power, Todd, about it's a cold day, you've got the heat going, or it's a hot day, you've got the AC going, you're two or three hours into the run or two hours in, and you're trying to get up a steep hill?
So we haven't experienced a steep hill rather than Queens. It's the only place in the city we have hills. We, the cold weather, obviously, was very hard to keep the battery to a mean, to a hard charge. The warmer weather's going to make that easier, but then you're going to be running the air conditioning. So we haven't, that's why we're really interested with these big buses that are coming in, to get them in areas that have a little more challenging roadway to, to make those determinations. And I don't, I didn't, we decided not to go with a van or a small bus to do it, because we're going to learn the hard way. We're going to go with a big bus and, and get all the tweaks out there. If you can get it done in a big bus, then you'll have no problem getting that technology into a van.
A question, because I don't know how unique Yorktown is, but we have a four-tier bus system, so our buses are running quite a ways in the morning, then there's only a couple of hours before they're back out on the road. So how quickly do they recharge and are they capable of getting through the all four tiers on the one charge?
So that's going to be something we're going to learn. And we're going to learn that by having a regular-type bus, very close proximity to the electric bus.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that's something we're going to learn, right? Can they come back from their morning run, from their tiers, and then charge up for a couple hours? How quickly can we get that charge is going to be something we're going to learn.
And certainly, if we can't get the charge, we're sending a regular bus out and that electric vehicle's staying in--
Yes.
--because nothing will come, and Todd and I have, and Vinnie and I have had this conversation, student transportation, student safety is paramount and it always will be paramount, and everything else, as far as I'm concerned, is secondary. Safety is always first for our students. So that's a great question, it's one that we've spent some time kicking around.
I just want to thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for when you took over the contract, you, you guys have been extremely responsive to us and you've far and away been the best transportation contractor we've had in a lot of years. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for engaging in this discussion and being ahead of the curve because it is a discussion we need to have and we don't have the expertise. So we want to thank you for your willingness to do that for us.
I thank you guys for being a great partner and believing in us when we sat here that, that date. And I told you, we weren't walking away, we were going to get this done, and you guys believed in us, and I appreciate that. So we'll partner up in other technologies and other stuff that we could do that will better enhance the children's experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. So I have a few other items, but I thank Todd and Vinnie for joining us this evening, and I thank Patty Sauer for coming out. Patty is really the glue that keeps the operation on the Yorktown side intact. With regard to just some other items, where the end of the school year is, is approaching very quickly, we are in the midst of hiring faculty and staff due to retirements and vacancies and student needs. We have a very busy calendar of events in each of our schools. Please do go onto our websites, there's constantly material coming home through email. I know Mohansik sent out this beautiful two-page calendar with end-of-year events and concerts. We had our first kindergarten in-person concert this year at Mohansik last week, and it was absolutely wonderful. It was held in the cafeteria. We had 102 students singing beautifully and very proud families in the audience, taking pictures, smiling, and just a nice opportunity to come together, really nice opportunity to come together. And that will continue. We have concerts planned, there are dances planned, prom, graduation, all of the wonderful end-of-year events are here, they're in person. Very few, if any, restrictions, we, we had no restrictions on the kindergarten concert at Mohansik. We didn't cap audiences at two or three, so it was just a wonderful event. The last three Board of Education meetings, I just want to share with our school community. The May 23 Board of Education meeting, so that's the very next meeting, two weeks from tonight, is our tenure recognition night, where we celebrate the remarkable milestone achievement for our staff who are earning tenure. They go through a very, very rigorous probationary period in our school district that includes multiple evaluations and observations, not only from the central office administrators, but from the building administrators as well. And we will celebrate our tenure awardees that night. The first Board of Education meeting in June, I believe it's June 6th, is our school partner recognition night. That's our night to say thank you to all of the organizations that support our schools. So the PTAs of the various school buildings, the District PTA, SEPTA, Husker Club, the Foundation, Alliance for Safe Kids, the First Nighters. We just take a moment out to honor the groups that work tirelessly throughout the school year to support our students and our schools. And then finally, the last meeting in June, which is just the very next week, June 13th, is our, this is a sad one for me, it's our anniversary celebrant on retiree recognition. And I have two just amazing retirees on this stage with me tonight, so that'll be an emotional night, I'm sure. June 13th, we'll celebrate milestone anniversaries in the school district and those who are moving on to the next chapter in life. So it will be a busy, busy next two months. The school budget vote and trustee election, as was noted earlier, is Tuesday, May 17th, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at French Hill. So come out, please exercise your right to vote. And that concludes my report for this evening. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And I want to thank you also, Dr. Hatter, for being willing to engage Total in the electric bus discussion. You know, you've got a lot of stuff on your plate, you're always willing to take on more, so I do appreciate that discussion. We're going to go on to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association's ratification of the 2223 budget and the slate for the 2223 officers and members of the Board of Directors?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Election inspectors and assistant clerk, resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoint the following individuals as election inspectors and/or alternate election inspectors for the 22 annual school district budget vote and election, to be compensated at a flat rate of $300 per, for the day. Beverly De Souza, Jane Piscatelli, Morgan Gibson, and Anthony LaRuscia. And B, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoints Jackie Carbone to serve as the assistant clerk at no compensation for the 2022 annual school district election and budget vote.
Tag, you're it.
Always.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. A motion to approve the claims audit report for May 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Is, are you sure that's May and not April? It's March. That's the March report. Can we change the?
Yes.
That? Thank you.
It's the March report.
And can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th and the April 19th minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Policies. A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policy, 0115 Student Harassment and Bullying Prevention and Intervention. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Can I have a motion to delete the following regulations from the policy manual? We have 4731R, which is Return of Student Work Regulation, 5680R, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges Regulation.
So moved.
Discussion. As a policy committee, Lisa and Cheryl and the rest of the committee, we've decided we're going to try to incorporate regulations into policy wherever is necessary. That's why you see a lot of regulations being deleted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. I have, Board will conduct a first reading of the following policies. We have 4731, Return of Student Work, 4680, Student Use of School Equipment, 8330, Authorized Loan of District-Owned Material and Equipment. Did anybody have any concerns or comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Going to go on to personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under Certified Personnel, we have other compensation, extra duty, part-time appointments, volunteers, and some resignations. Under Classified Personnel, we have appointments to civil service, police monitors, and resignation for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under the Business Office, Athletic Merger, be resolved that the, that the recommendation of the superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education, the Yorktown Central School District, approve the following athletic mergers for the 2223 school years as per the merger applications. We have girls swimming with Somers, with Gymnastic with Somers, Hen and Hud, Croton, Briar Cliff, and John Jay. We have boys ice hockey with Brewster, Somers, and North Salem. Boys swim and dive with Somers.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. A motion to approve the geese release vendor agreement for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, for a fee of $325 per week, pending receipt of required insurance documents. The total cost of the year is not to exceed $16,900.
So moved.
Uh-huh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. A motion to approve the following contracts for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2122 school year. These are for Katona and Scarsdale.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. A motion to approve the audit proposal from Tobin and Company in the amount not to exceed $3,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Curriculum. A resolution to recertify lead evaluator of classroom teachers pursuant to Education Law Section 3012D. This is certifying Christopher Miller.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Placements. A motion to approve the placements as of May 9th, 2022?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations with gratitude from Crumpon, $2,000 from the Crumpon PTA for the fourth-grade trip to Museum Village, and to the district, $1,000 in Acme Market gift cards from the Gen Youth on behalf of Acme Markets Foundation and Nursing Neighbors Campaign.
I'm a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. What's wrong? We have a second public comment. Have you signed up? Is that correct? We have board comment. Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, so tonight was amazing. I love having the kids here. I looked at their robot, and I can't even make a stack of, you know, a tower out of Legos, and they built a robot. So that's amazing. And that's all thanks to you, Dr. Hatter, and your team for bringing these programs to the school, and Tom finding the money for us to be able to fund them. And so on that note, just a reminder to everybody, please vote. May 17th, the budget and the trustee positions, please remember to vote. It's really important.
Cheryl? I just wanted to say thank you to the middle school for coming out tonight. The First Lego League did a tremendous job. The projects that they work on are really not just tactical. What we're seeing is a lot of collaboration and teamwork and marketing, and even the piece about putting the T-shirts together and coming up with logos. So much goes into this team that it's really wonderful to see. So I really, really, truly do appreciate them all coming out tonight. They're tackling a problem that affects us all and the environment, and the skills that they take away there are just amazing. So it's esteemed at work, it's really problem-solving, and, you know, working together, collaboration to make the world a better place. So we appreciate that.
Very sweet.
Well, thank you, Tom, for your last budget. It's really been a pleasure to work with you, and a lot of thought has gone into this year's budget. And I'm really proud of the things that we're still able to add for our students, you know, whether it's athletics, or facilities, or programming and staff. So again, please come out next Tuesday. It starts at 7:00 AM.